Okay, live stream is up. Just make sure that it's the right stream.
I'm waiting to confirm. Sergeant Hope, the stream is up.
Thank you, sir. All sergeant, did you begin your recordings?
Computer recording is a go.
Thank you. Cloud recording rolling. Good. Hello and welcome to the New York City Country Remote Hearing under Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. At this time, all panelists, please turn on your videos. Thank you. To minimize disruption, please, please, all electronic devices to be wired or silent mode. Thank you. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I repeat, landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. Welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee of Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee. This morning, I'm joined remotely by Councilmembers Abreu, Carr, Shulman, Hanks, Lewis, Councilmember Hanif, Councilmember Wrestler, Councilmember Moya.
And Councilmember Shulman.
Oh, I said Councilwoman Shulman. Thank you, Council. Today, we will vote a rezoning proposal for Ninety-Eighth Third Avenue in Brooklyn and Forty-Five Forty-One Furman Avenue in the Bronx that we heard by the Subcommittee on May Thirty-First. We will also hold public hearings for three rezoning proposals in Queens for Weather Roll Street and Sixty- Sixty-Seven, excuse me, Avenue, Seventy-Seven dash Thirty-Ninth Lay Place and Eleventh Street and Thirty-Fourth Avenue, and one rezoning proposal in Brooklyn for Forty-One Summit Street. Before we begin, I recognize the Subcommittee Council to review the hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chair Riley. I am Angelina Martinez, Rear Counsel to the Subcommittee. Members of the public wishing to testify were asked to register for today's hearing. If you wish to testify and have not already registered, please do so now by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting at the Council's website. If you need an accessible version of this, of any of the presentations shown today, please send an email request to landusstemony@council.nyc.gov. When called to testify, individuals appearing before the Subcommittee will remain muted until recognized by the Chair to speak. Applicants will be recognized as a group and called first, followed by members of the public. When the Chair recognizes you, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. Public testimony will be limited to two minutes per witness. We have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider. If you have written testimony you would like to submit, instead of appearing here before the Subcommittee, you may email it to, again, landusstemony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and our project name and the subject line of your email. During the hearing, Councilmembers with questions should use the soon raise hand function, which appears at the bottom of either your participant panel or the primary viewing window. Councilmembers with questions will be announced in order as they raise their hands, and Chair Riley or I will then recognize members to speak. Witnesses are requested to remain in the meeting until excused by the Chair, as Councilmembers may have questions for you. Finally, there will be pauses over the course of this meeting for various technical reasons, and we ask that you please be patient as we work through any issues. Chair Riley will now continue with today's agenda.
Thank you, Council. Today, we will vote to approve LU Sixty-Five and Sixty-Six relating to the Ninety-Eighth Third Avenue rezoning proposal in Councilmember Wrestler's district in Brooklyn. The proposal includes a zoning map amendment to rezone the existing M One dash Two district to an R Seven D slash C Two dash Four and R Six B district, and a related zoning tax amendment to a MIH program area utilizing option one and two. Councilmember Wrestler is in support of this proposal, and I would just like to recognize Councilmember Wrestler to give any brief remarks regarding this proposal. Councilmember Wrestler?
Thank you, Chair Riley, and thank you to all members of the Subcommittee. This was yet another rezoning proposal that certified during my predecessor's tenure, and so we didn't have the opportunity to shape it in the ways that I would have fully hoped. But we did work closely with the applicant and reach an agreeable outcome. This is the last fully M-zone block in Borum Hill. And this site in particular is a gas station that's being rezoned to allow for mixed-use development. The developer has agreed to go beyond the MIH requirements, and I believe thirty-one or thirty-two percent of the units will be affordable housing with an average of sixty-eight percent AMI across the affordable units. It's a relatively small project, just twenty-nine units in total with commercial ground floor. We've talked to the developer at length about trying to prioritize fresh produce and some sort of market of some kind on the ground floor, if that's feasible, though this isn't a particularly large site. And we've really prioritized the needs of the longtime community in the area as well. So in addition to the developer exceeding the MIH requirements, they have committed to making a consequential contribution to the trust for public land, upgrade public space at the adjacent nitrogen development across the street that will serve the whole community. It's critically important to me that as we allow for yet further rezonings and greater density in our community, that developers take responsibility for investing in the infrastructure of our community as well, whether that be park and playground space, or sewer infrastructure, or school capacity, or whatever the case may be. We need developers to help our community meet our growing needs as they contribute to that very growth. So I'm pleased that we were able to achieve a reasonable outcome here. And it was a rather tense negotiation, but it worked itself out. I'd like to thank the applicant, Mr. Wolf, and their team, Eric and Ryan and others, for bearing with me and our team. And I especially want to thank my Chief of Staff, Miriam Alexander, who in all things is just superb, and Arvin Sinwali, who does our land use and is also our, you know, is just a tremendous member of our team and did a great job navigating this one. And lastly, I just want to appreciate Brian Paul, recognize Brian Paul from the Land Use Division for his assistance in helping us work through this. So thank you to all of the, to my colleagues. Sorry for dragging on a little bit there, but just wanted to recognize the people who helped make this all happen.
Last, finally, Councilmember Wrestler, thank you. We will also vote to approve with the modifications LU Sixty-Three and Sixty-Four and Fifty-One for the Forty-Five Forty-One Furman Avenue rezoning in Councilmember Denoist District in the Bronx. This proposal will rezone existing M One dash One district to an R Seven D slash C Two dash Four district, and a related zoning tax amendment to establish an MIH program area utilizing options one and two. The Council's modification will eliminate the proposed extension of the transit zone. Councilmember Denoist is in support of this proposal as modified. And just want to make sure, Councilmember Denoist isn't... Members of the Subcommittee who have any questions or remarks about these items, should use the raise hand button now. Council will announce members in the order that hands are raised. Council, are there any Councilmembers with questions or remarks at this time?
Chair, I don't see any Councilmembers with questions at this time.
I now call for a vote. I now call for a vote to approve LU Sixty-Five and Sixty-Six for the Ninety-Eighth Third Avenue rezoning proposal, and to approve with modifications LU Sixty-Three and Sixty-Four for the Forty-Five Forty-One Furman Avenue rezoning proposal. Council, please call the roll.
Chair Riley.
I don't know.
Councilmember Moya.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Abreu.
I don't know.
Councilmember Hanks. Councilmember Hanks. Are you there? We'll go back to her. Councilmember Shulman, oh, Councilmember Hanks?
Yes.
Councilmember Shulman.
I don't know.
Councilmember Carr.
I don't know.
The vote currently stands at seven, seven in the affirmative, no negative, no abstentions, and we will leave the vote open.
Thank you, Council. To continue with today's meeting, I will now open the public hearing. All preconsiders LU's C Two One Zero Three Seven Five ZMQ and N Two One Zero Three Seven Six ZRQ relating to the Weather Roll Street and Sixty-Seventh Avenue rezoning proposal in Councilmember Shulman's district in Queens. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone the existing R Four B to R Six A and a relating zoning tax amendment to establish an MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. Once again, that's council.nyc.gov/landuse. Now, I'd like to allow Councilmember Shulman to give any remarks regarding this project that she has. Councilmember Shulman?
Yes, so first, I want to commend the applicant team for their willingness to engage with the community and its concerns throughout the public review process. I'm proud to support the creation of affordable housing in my district, and this project would create permanently affordable units in a walkable, bikeable part of Forest Hills, well-served by public transportation. I have some questions, but we can do that when we get to that point.
Thank you, Councilmember Shulman. Council, please call the first panel for this item.
Richard, I just, I want to, I will call it. If there's anyone missing, let me know, because I see a discrepancy between the names that were submitted. But the panel will be Richard Lobell, Dominic Rekia, Kevin Williams, and Rebecca DeVodian. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Is that correct, Richard?
That's correct.
So panelists, I'm sorry, Chair, you can tell me through, administer there.
Oh, go ahead, Council. Council, please introduce the affirmation.
I got ahead of it. Panelists, can you please raise your right hand and answer, I will call on you individually to answer the following question. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee? And then your answer to all Councilmember questions. Richard Lobell.
I do.
Dominic Rekia.
I do.
Kevin Williams.
I do.
And Rebecca DeVodian.
I do.
Thank you for the view of public. If you, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusstemony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you please restate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, P.C., for the applicant. Good afternoon. Thank Councilmember Shulman for her kind words, and we're thrilled to take this through the Community Board, which voted in favor of this rezoning. This is the Weather Roll Street and Sixty-Seventh Avenue rezoning. I will quickly run through the presentation, and then the entire applicant team is happy to answer any questions. Please load the slides. So the next slide. The next slide contains a summary of the actions here. The rezoning itself is very straightforward. The applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment to rezone Block Three One Five Seven, lots One Forty-Three to One Forty-Seven, One Forty-Nine, One Fifty, and One Fifty-One, and part of One Fifty-Two, to, from an R Four B to an R Six A zoning district. This would facilitate the development of two lots, Sixty-Six and Forty, Sixty-Six Forty-Five and Sixty-Six Forty-Seven Weather Roll Street, with a new eight-story, approximately eighteen thousand square foot residential building with approximately twenty-one units, including five permanently affordable units. In addition, we are proposing, as with all such rezonings, a tax amendment to map mandatory inclusionary housing, which would provide for options one and option two. The applicant currently contemplates option one, which would provide for five permanently affordable units. Next slide. So the proposal has a building which is projected eight stories, roughly eighteen thousand square feet with a three-point-six floor area ratio, the base height of sixty-five feet, total height of seventy-five feet. It would be set back at the seventh floor, would contain eight vehicular parking spaces and eleven bike parking spaces, and again, twenty-one units with five affordable at option one. The next page has the zoning map, which really demonstrates in the first instance why this is an appropriate zoning action. As you can see, the R Four B here is a relatively small district and is surrounded by larger density districts, including the R Seven B to the southwest on Austin, and the R Seven One, which surrounds the property to the east, west, and north. The development that this has resulted in from these R Seven One districts, including adjacent to this zoning district on this block, have produced buildings ranging from six to eight stories and taller, as you'll see in the area map, and really demonstrates why this is an appropriate area for this rezoning. Next slide. So the next slide merely shows the tax map, and is a little bit more of a focused view of the lots that would be rezoned. There are five lots adjacent to the property to the east, as well as the two applicant-owned lots that are highlighted in red, and one lot to the west. Additionally, due to the even dimension of one-seventy-five, there's five feet of another lot which would be also included, but no development would be projected at that site due to the small area within the rezoning. Next slide. The next slide, which is the area map, really demonstrates why the bulk here is appropriate. You can see in the orange color all of these multifamily buildings, longstanding pre-war buildings, all of which are at six to eight stories immediately around the applicant site. So this is not an area in which density is unknown. And this is one of the reasons we were happy to proceed with this rezoning, and we're really thrilled with our dialogue with the Community Board. The Community Board kind of understood that if you wanted to create new residential units in this area, and importantly, new affordable units in this area, you had to find places where that density would be appropriate. And here, the fact that on the doorstep of this rezoning area are six and eight-story buildings, many of which are almost as tall within five to ten feet of the projected building at the site, including the six-story building on the block, it, the Community Board really considered that and demonstrated that they felt that it was really within the character to allow these buildings to move forward into R Six A. You can even see on the block to the south, there's an existing thirteen-story building. Moreover, we're two blocks south of, or two to three blocks south, depending on the measurement, of Queens Boulevard, a extra-wide boulevard at over two hundred feet with several subway lines and excellent transportation. So despite the fact that there was a rezoning of the entirety of the area and an area-wide rezoning in two thousand and two, members of the Community Board understood that so much has changed in the last twenty years and that it was appropriate now to reasonably map an R Six A district here. Next slide. The next slide shows a before and after of the zoning map. Again, you can see the existing R Four B existing along Sixty-Seventh Avenue and Weather Roll Street, after which a seventeen thousand five hundred square foot area, including the applicant's five thousand square feet, would be rezoned to R Six A. The next slide and remaining slides have photographs of the area, as well as the building itself, superimposing the area. Again, you can see buildings in the foreground and the background, all at heights which approximate the proposed height of this building. If you can page through the photographs to the first page of plans, which contain zoning calculations. Again, relatively typical floor plan layouts, roughly twenty-nine hundred square feet of floor. If you want to just quickly page through those slides, you'll see ground floor parking with residential units above. Again, the eight parking spaces within the building with eleven bike parking spaces. The bedrooms are typical, one-to-two family, one-to-two bedroom units going up through the building. And then finally, at the eighth floor, there's a setback inclusive of a terrace garden at the, at the top floor. The last two slides, if you could be so kind as to forward through to the AMI, adjusted median income levels. This, at sixty percent AMI, you would average fifty thousand one hundred and sixty dollars for income for a family of one, all the way through seventy-one thousand for a family of four. Those would be averages. Of course, because we're, we would be providing affordability in option one, ten percent would be at forty percent AMI. So the next slide also demonstrates rents for this, for the AMI units, which you can see averaging at sixty percent would be nine hundred and fifty-six through fourteen hundred dollars, and at forty percent levels would be roughly six hundred to nine hundred dollars. So, you know, we were really thrilled to get Community Board Six support on this, as well as the Queensborough President. You know, I've been doing this for some time, and I've been to Queens Community Board Six, and of course, throughout the city, Community Board throughout the city. The nature and quality of the discussion around this rezoning frankly made me proud to be a New Yorker. You know, really a recognition that, that this was going to be a benefit to the community and the opportunity to really provide some affordability in an area where you don't necessarily find new units of this type. So with that, again, we thank Councilmember Shulman for her discussion on this, and the entire team is happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Richard. I just have a question, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Shulman. A rezoning from an R Four A to an R Six A is a pretty large increase in density from an zero-point-seven-five FAR to a three-point-six FAR. Could you just restate the land use rationale for the increased state at this project site?
Happy to do so, Chair. I think maybe just as, by way of putting something on the screen, if, if we could load up the area map for a moment, which is the colored map, but I'll continue talking while that's done. So it's true that the R Four A has an existing residential floor area ratio of point-seven-five, point-nine with the attic rule. But interestingly, the R Four A also carries with it a FAR floor area ratio of two for medical office and medical facility. And in fact, the applicant here, Novel Medicine is the name of the applicant, is, is an applicant which has developed community facility, medical institutions in the past. And so the square footage at this site would enable for a ten thousand square foot community facility medical office. That's not what we're doing here. Obviously, we're going to have an eighteen thousand square foot residential building. But I think one of the things that was compelling to the Community Board was the fact that your existing as a right option somewhat approximates, at least comes closer to what your proposed residential option would be. Secondly, the fact that this is literally across Sixty-Seventh Avenue from an R Seven One district, which is a district with no similar height cap. It is a, is a non-contextual district. And that the, the building size at the, at the site is going to be within five to ten feet of buildings both across the street and on the very block of this rezoning was also persuasive to the community. In addition, the fact that there is a plethora of transportation options nearby, that's something that city planning looks to and something that's been recognized through Eulerp as being great for this development. People will be able to get to and from this site very, in a very, you know, in a, in a manner which, which allows for additional density at the site. So all of those things taken together, the fantastic transportation options, the fact that you've got density in the area, immediately in the area, both adjacent to this development site as well as across the street, really kind of allows for this R Six A density to exist here and, and, you know, and the Community Board really agreed with them.
Thank you, Richard. I now turn it over to Councilmember Shulman for some questions. Councilmember Shulman?
Thank you, Chair Riley. The Community Board and Borough President both indicated that having local and MWBE hiring targets in this thirty percent range for construction are important goals for the community. Do you still commit to those goals? And do you have a plan for regular reporting on progress to Community Board Six? And if you could give me specifics, that would be helpful.
Sure, thank you, Councilmembers. So we do commit to those goals. Rochelle Cameoff, who's the applicant, and I saw is listening in on the, on the, on the presentation. He and I have talked about this, and he understands what the community is doing here and trusting him with. And so he's happy to commit to the MWBE and LCA goals as stated. I know that we've talked in the past and have talked about reporting to the Queensborough President's office. And so what we would propose here similarly would be to allow for regular reporting with regards to such employment during the time of construction of the building. And so while we don't have a specific interval, I imagine it would be something akin to quarterly reporting. We would provide lists to the Queensborough President's Office of MWBE and LCA hiring would include the Community Board on those communications, and hopefully that would satisfy any informal reporting requirements from those agencies.
Yeah, if you would, if you would make sure to include the Community Board, but I may ask that, for that to be separate as well, because I have other applicants that have done that. And I think it would be much appreciated, especially since you've had a good relationship with, with the board. And I am still committed to having good faith, I, I know this is a small project, to having good faith discussions with local unions to ensure the building is built by workers with prevailing wage and benefits.
Yes, so we, we have, we have committed to that. And as you can probably see in the presentation, Dominic Rekia is also on the call with us. Dominic is the governmental relations professional who is associated with the project. I know whether or not Dominic wants to address that right now.
Yeah, we are going to reach out with all, you know, the parties involved and unions and work and make sure everything's done, prevailing wage and living wage, and make sure there's benefits. And we want to work with the Community Board, with your office, and with the City Council to make sure that everything is complied with as you wish. And we will have conversations with everybody involved.
I appreciate that, and if you can keep us updated, because I know, like I said, it's a small project, so some unions may not feel it's worth getting involved, and I understand that. But at least if we know what the communication was and what their response back was, I think that would be helpful too, just in terms of transparency.
You're up to date, Councilmember.
Great. And can you speak to what environmental sustainability features you plan to include in the building design?
Yes, so sadly, given the change in the Council's schedule, our architect, Tony Chitemi, who was, was available for prior conversations with the Community Board is not available to us. So I'm, I'm somewhat hamstrung in that Tony is much better equipped to have that discussion. Having said that, I know that there are certain environmentally sensitive measures. Tony's architectural firm, Urban Architectural Initiatives, is well-versed in both private and public projects in including environmental sustainability measures on the buildings. And so it may be more appropriate to follow up office in writing. We, we can kind of give you some of those measures. But I, I know that Tony's has provided many plans and materials which demonstrate, I believe, water retention and other measures which would be taken at the building in order to allow for the, a modest environmental footprint for the building.
What we'll do is we'll follow up in writing to you, and then you can follow up back with us. So that would be helpful.
Excellent, thank you, Council.
That's all the questions I have, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Shulman. I now invite my colleagues to ask questions. If you have any questions for the applicant panel, please use the raise hand button on the participant panel. Council, are there any Councilmember with questions?
Chair, I don't see any Councilmember with questions at this time.
There being no further questions, the applicant panel is excused. Council, are there any members of the public who is to testify on the Weather Roll Street and Sixty-Seventh Avenue proposal?
Chair, there are no members of the public who signed up to testify on this proposal.
There being no members of the public who is to testify on preconsidered LU C Two One Zero Three Seven Five ZMQ and N Two One Zero Three Seven Q ZRQ relating to the Weather Roll Street and Sixty-Seventh Avenue rezoning proposal. The public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over. Council, before we go into the next hearing, I see we're joined by Councilmember Botcher. Could you take his vote, please?
Yes, we'll do. And Chair, just a heads up, we're going to do live place next. So the hearing that we had as the last hearing, that's going to be our next hearing, so that we wait for Councilmember Hanif to come back for Summit. So continuing the vote on LU's Sixty-Five and Sixty-Six for Third Avenue and Sixty-Three, LU Sixty-Three and Sixty-Four for Furman Avenue. Councilmember Botcher.
I vote aye.
Thank you. The final vote is eight in the affirmative, no negatives, no abstentions. The items are approved and will be recommended to the full Land Use Committee.
Thank you, Council. I will now open up the public hearing on preconsiders LU's C Two One Zero One Two Eight ZMQ and N Two One Zero One Two Nine ZRQ relating to the Seventy-Seven dash Thirty-Nine Live Place rezoning proposal in Councilmember Gennaro's district in Queens. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone the existing R Three dash Two slash C One dash Two district to an R Six A slash to an R six A slash C two dash three district and a related zoning text amendment to establish an M I H program area for anyone wishing to testify on this item. If you have not already done so, you must register online and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council dot N Y C dot gov slash land use. Counsel, can you please call the first panel for this item?
Sorry, Chair, I was on mute. The panelists for this item that I have are Jay Goldstein and Justin Sherman. And Mr. Goldstein, can you just confirm that's just, that's all I have for you guys? I think you're on mute, hold on. Um, hold on. So I have Jay Goldstein, Kevin Williams, Justin Sherman. Is that it?
Kevin Williams was the last name.
So, panelists, can you please raise your right hand so that I can administer the oath? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony to the subcommittee and in your answer to all council member questions? I will call on you individually to answer. Jay Goldstein?
Yes.
Kevin Williams, you're already sworn in, so I'll just remind you, you're on the road. And Justin Sherman. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. For the viewer public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony at council dot N Y C dot gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you, please re-estate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Good afternoon. Jay Goldstein, on behalf of V P Capital Holdings LLC, um, if we can bring out the slides. Next slide, please. We're here this afternoon, um, to request a zoning map and text amendment for the subject site. Uh, the site, as you can see, is an irregularly shaped lot between Seventy-Eighth Avenue, Fly Place and Seventy-seventh Road in the Q Garden Hill section of Queens, Community Board Eight, Councilmember Gennaro's district. The development has approximately ninety feet of frontage on Seventy-seventh Road, two hundred and twenty feet of frontage on Fly Place, and a hundred seventy-one feet of frontage on Seventy-Eighth Avenue. Next slide, please. The project area has been zoned R three-two with a C one-two since nineteen sixty-one. The subject lot is thirty-four and a half thousand square feet of lot area. And as of right, we'd be able to build approximately fifty-five thousand square feet of a mixed-use building. Residential, commercial and community facility would all be allowed as of right in this district. Next slide, please. The proposal before you seeks to rezone the area as mentioned to an R six A with a C two overlay. This would permit an eight-story mixed-use building with a max residential floor area ratio of three point six, community facility ratio, floor area ratio of three point oh, commercial floor area ratio of two point oh. The proposed development would also seek a text amendment to map this area as options one and two for M I H. And it's anticipated to utilize option two for the proposal, eighty percent AMI. This was, um, chosen in response to many of the comments and, and, uh, many of the conversations we've had in the community, where the need for affordable housing was greater than the need for deep affordable housing. Therefore, option two seemed, which would give us a larger percentage of units, seemed to be a better fit. The as-of-right AMIs, the, the AMIs rather tied to the eighty percent, uh, affordability would be in line with what the average, um, income is for this area of Q Garden Hills, which typically sees, uh, a little higher, um, incomes than other areas. Next slide, please. So as of right, the rezoning would allow for an eight-story building with a hundred twenty-four thousand square feet of floor area. Hundred and four thousand square feet would be residential, it'd be a hundred and nineteen units, eighty-three were, were market, thirty-six affordable. And then, as you can see, the cellar and the first floor would be a mix of community facility and commercial, um, uses. At the cellar level, at the sub-seller level, sorry, we have a hundred twenty-six parking spaces proposed. Land use rationale for this project was, um, based on the fact that this is a short, uh, commute to the Q Gardens interchange. It has significant access to major roadways, highways, as well as local and express buses. And it's a short walk to the subway E N F station, so there's access. Transportation is plentiful for this site and therefore it was deemed to be a, a good site. There's also open space directly across from the property and the site itself is uniquely, um, situated that it's a large site that can accommodate housing and affordable housing on this, i- in this area, which has not seen much growth in the recent years. Next slide, please. Um, so as mentioned, the as-of-right R six A would permit an eight-story building. However, in response to many of the comments that we, uh, and community feedback that we've received over the course of the EULAR, the owners made a number of commitments both to the community board and to the council member. Um, we've committed to reducing the scale of the building. As you can see on your left-hand side of the screen and in the next number of pictures, the same juxtaposition, that the left-hand side would be the as-of-right eight-story building in the R six A. And on the right-hand side, you have a five-story with a partial six-story. And you can see at the sixth floor, heavily set back long Fly Place and the two side streets. And you could see the rooftop area would be open for tenants as well as the green roof, um, as part of the amenities. If you can go to the next slide, we'll just, it shows further, um, angles of the building and you can see the reduction that was, that was committed by this applicant. Next slide, please. And then the final slide, please. So here at the rear of the building, there's actually, on top of the first floor, there'll be an open terrace at the second floor is open space for the tenants of the building. Um, the R six A would, again, as mentioned, uh, be reduced artificially and we've committed to work with council through restrictive decks and commitments made by my client to ensure that we build this building as proposed before you today. Um, we anticipate that the reduced building will have, instead of a hundred nineteen units, ninety units, that'll have a, uh, twenty-seven M I U, M I H units, which is a net loss of nine from the originally proposed. Additionally, in response to comments from members of the community, we've, originally it was proposed to have twenty-five two bedrooms out of the hundred nineteen units. We've increased that number to approximately fifty percent of the building, having two-bedroom units, forty-five units. Um, and these units are intended to be for family-sized units to encourage people to stay in the area. And finally, in response to comments about parking and traffic, um, we'll maintain a hundred twenty-six parking spaces that are, that are in the sub-seller, can be accommodated in the sub-seller, and we've committed to providing one free space to all of the tenants in the building, to all of the, the dwelling units in the building. Um, as mentioned, we've made the commitments to my client, my client has made the commitments in writing to the community board and to the council member. We also wanted to read, if I may, a letter from my client that will be submitted post-hearing, a further attesting to his commitments, um, for this project. So if you'll permit me, I'll read that letter to you now. My name is Avi Matzotov. I am the developer for seventy-seven dash sixty-three of Fly Place. Under the requested R six A zoning, our proposed development would be able to build up to eight stories. During the public review process, my team has pledged to restrict the height of the development via restrictive declaration to six stories. It's come to my attention that some have concerns about the enforceability of the restrictive declaration on height. As a local developer with deep roots in the community and a strong interest in continuing to work in and around Community Board Eight, my word and reputation are very important to me. I am entering this statement as part of the city council record under oath that I have every intention of keeping my word to restrict this building to six stories under the R six A zoning. If there are further assurances I can provide, I would be happy to, happy to discuss those. So that is, on behalf of my client, that's the letter that we'll submit into the record. And finally, um, there's been some discussion back and forth from the Borough President's Office regarding the proposal being modified perhaps to an R six B. So the R six B zoning district doesn't work for this project because the R six B would allow, would allow up to two point two F A R. And the proposed building as modified is somewhere around three F A R. The built, the R six B would result in a net loss of approximately fifty-one thousand square feet and only, only produce fourteen M I H units, which is a net loss of twenty-two M I H units. The cost in construction and associated with the smaller building and the operating of these units would not allow my, would not allow my client to realize a reasonable return and would make the project unfeasible. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. I just have a few questions for this applicant team. Plans were filed and construction, uh, has, was beginning on an as-of-right low-rise commercial building. Could you just, uh, for the record, I know you probably stated, uh, in your presentation, but for the record, uh, why did you decide to pause this project and pursue a rezoning for a larger mixed-use residential building?
So the bill, the history of this building, it was historically a one-story commercial building that burnt down. So my client bought the property and cleared away the, uh, the damaged building. And there was remediation on the property that had to be performed. As a result, in order to perform the remediation and build the foundation, he dug out the property and couldn't leave a hole in the property. So while we were doing this and going forward with the plan for the rezoning, he built an as-of-right structure just to get in the ground, to have, he has right now the, the sub-seller seller, first and second floor, as you see on the proposed plans. If the rezoning happens, then he'll continue to build in accordance with the plans as we presented them. And if the rezoning doesn't, he has an as-of-right building. So it was just strictly to fill, backfill the property and to get our feet in the ground so that we can have a property that is not, you know, a danger.
How did you determine the proposed R six A district was the appropriate destiny for the site?
Given the, as mentioned before, given the access to tre- local transit and given the fact that this site is a large site that's uniquely, um, able to accommodate affordable housing, we thought that we would take advantage of this, of the site, which can accommodate a larger bulk than a smaller site could.
How, how far would this building be for, from a local, uh, train station?
It's about a half a mile. You walk straight down Union Turnpike, but the express bus to Union Turnpike is only a few minutes' walk on Union Turnpike and there are local buses that take you directly to Jamaica Station as well.
Uh, last question. The Borough President recommended, uh, that the rezoning be modified from R six A to R six B. And I believe that you were touched on this, uh, just a while ago, to address the community concerns about the building's height and bulk. Is the applicant open to that modification and what trade-offs would arise from that?
So the applicant, right now, views the R six B as not a viable option for this project. It results in a much smaller building that wouldn't produce a, a return that makes this project viable. Therefore, we've, in, in response to the concerns about the height of the building, we've reduced the building to what amounts to a five-story with a significantly set-back sixth floor so that we can, um, try and address those concerns, but still maintain a building that provides community facility space, commercial space and affordable housing units that are needed in this area.
And you, you say that the applicant is from this area?
The applicant lives in Forest Hills. He has family in this area and there's a significant community, Orthodox Jewish community that he belongs to that is present in this area.
Thank you. I now like to invite my colleagues to ask any questions. Counselor, are there any council members with any questions?
Chair, I don't see any council members with questions at this time.
There being no further questions, the applicant panel is not excused. Thank you. Counselor, are there any members of the public who is to testify on the seventy-seven dash thirty-nine Live Place proposal?
Chair, we have currently four members of the public present at the hearing who are ready to testify.
Members.
Chair, you cut out, but you can do, you can do the announcement to the, to the witness.
Thank you. For the members of the public here to testify, please note the witnesses will generally be called to the panels of floor. If you are a member of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepare to speak when I call your name. Please also note that once all panelists in your group have completed their testimony, you will be removed from the meeting as a group and the next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the live stream broadcast of this hearing on the council's website. Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the Sergeant of Arms has started the clock.
Chair, I will call the names of the panel, but, oh, I, there's actually five people to testify. I will call your names and some of you may or may not be members of the applicant panel. So if you're not here to provide testimony, um, let us know, but I will call all of you nonetheless. So the panel will be Emmanuel Yelyzarov, and I apologize if I mispronounce your names. Edor Yavudem, Diana Rakne, Nathan Rubenov and Rabbi Itzak Yehoshua. Uh, the first panelists will be Emmanuel Yelyzarov.
Your time will begin.
Hi, uh, can I start?
Yes, you may begin, Emmanuel.
Uh, hi, good afternoon. My name is Emmanuel Yelyzarov and, uh, I'm here to testify on behalf of, uh, Matt Tattos that, uh, planning to build, uh, this beautiful facility on a place that was, uh, uh, completely contaminated. And, uh, the family got, uh, uh, certification from the state, cleaned it up and you know how the, it is not easy. And, uh, as it was already mentioned, that, uh, they are local developers and, um, very known people in the community. And, um, uh, obviously, we read the, uh, newspapers and stuff, uh, of, of various community meetings, uh, and you could see that, uh, the applicant already, um, uh, compromised having, uh, six-story building, uh, which offered instead of eight, which offers, um, uh, for all residents, uh, free parking, um, Shabbat elevator, which is very important because, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, elders, uh, live in that, uh, area. And fortunately, they're leaving the place because, uh, the buildings practically don't have elevators. And you could see like, uh, within, um, uh, last fifty years, there was no new construction, uh, in the area. Obviously, like, or it's been, uh, of affordability. Um, you know, uh, we have new affordable houses, uh, in, uh, buildings in our neighborhood. And, uh, uh, it is very important that, uh, uh, he is willing to accommodate, like, thirty-five affordable units out of approximately like ninety apartments. And, uh, I would like to, uh, close on, um, uh, I know the personally, the family for, uh, a couple of decades and, uh, it's very respectful, respected, uh, family now, community. And, uh, they are not, uh, to make money and live, they are in the community and they, uh, know what they're doing. And they obviously deliver whenever they promise. If, uh, I have more time, I would just, uh, would like to, uh, help, uh, maybe the community to understand that developers to, uh, uh, build and have new developments, uh, because, uh, demographics are changing and, uh, needs for the, uh, more affordable units is, uh, rising. And, um, um, uh, good families, uh, local, uh, families that are trying to build and make the, uh, community better. I think we need just to give them a hand to help.
Thank you, Emmanuel.
Thank you.
Um, Chair, the next speaker on this panel will be Rabbi Itzak Yehoshua.
You may begin.
Hello, Shalom. Do you hear me?
Yes, good afternoon, Rabbi. We hear you.
Thank you for the hearing. The Bukarian community in the last thirty years settled in this part of Queens and brought a lot of, uh, new life to the Jewish community and to the entire community. Uh, in the last few years, because of the pricing and because of the, um, uh, the need for, uh, for housing apartments, I'm, I'm going to, uh, uh, endorse and I'm going to encourage every developer would like to build more affordable because I'm, the young community at this moment, they are moving now to the Five Towers, to Long Island, which is wonderful. It's, uh, it's United States too, but I would like to keep Queens as the nucleus of our community. And they, I believe that, uh, cooperating with this, uh, very special family, which are all members and leaders in our community will benefit all of us, the community, the family, of course, and the, um, and, and the Jewish community. So, um, I would like you to, um, ask you to do whatever you do in order to help, uh, commu- uh, to cooperate and make the, um, the ruling in the, for this important mission.
Thank you, Rabbi.
I bless you.
I bless you too.
Um, the next speaker will be Diana Rakne.
Your time will begin.
Hello.
Good afternoon Diana, you may begin.
Sorry about my surroundings. I just actually stepped out of meeting and it's quite loud in there, so I won't be able to enter again. Um I'm actually advocating for the development of this property on the live place. A, because of the fact that we see a great rise in a lot of changes in what's happening with COVID that took place. A lot of people aren't able to afford their houses that they currently have, especially the elderly community. Uh I've been a resident here in this community for my whole life, actually, that my family came here in nineteen seventy five, and I understand how important it is to develop the community, especially when it comes to providing. You know, for example, we have a lot of young people who are getting married and they don't have anywhere to turn to in terms of living because there aren't enough places to move into. Um homes are not always ideal for, you know, newlyweds as it is a cost that not everyone can afford. And the providing of of being able to allow even supportive housing, as I understood here, is also an option. I see how it can benefit everyone tremendously. Now, I know that there is always a fear of, you know, what happens, but we don't have control over over, you know, who comes in and who comes out. And I think that should not be what we should be looking at. We should be looking at how this actually can benefit the community. So I want to advocate for this because this is very, very important for those who are young, for those who are looking for a living space, for those who are in the older generation who can't afford anymore to be able to live in their homes with maintenance and and whatever else comes up. Aside from the fact that this also is in the heart of a very prominent neighborhood where there is, you know, a religious of serving places and schools. And again, this is something that we need to think about how this can actually benefit the community rather than how this can provide any negative situation. Uh there's like, I think there's always going to be a catch twenty two, whichever way you look at this. That everything has, uh you know, polar opposite sides of every of every aspect that we can see as a negative and positive. So we need to see this, how this can actually really benefit the community. And like I said, I'm for and pro this building and what it's going to be able to provide for our community.
Thank you Diana.
Thank you.
Um I think then there's a couple of you that are um calling witnesses, so we're gonna try to get use of the next speaker will be Emmanuel Yelizharov. Oh, sorry, you you spoke, sorry. Um hold on, let me get you. Edward Yagudaya.
Your time will begin.
Hello.
Yes, you can hear you.
Everyone, hi, my name is Edward Yaguday. Um I'm speaking today in favor of the live place development. I'd like to touch upon a few points pertaining to our previous administration. Uh I was rather optimistic uh with the previous administration's promise for affordable housing. It's in the past eight years in particular neighborhoods, we haven't really seen uh any changes. Everywhere else in the five boroughs, including parts of Queens, developers are welcome to build affordable housing. Um sure many of you see the instructions going up and other parts of Queens and uh other boroughs as well. But for whatever reason, there isn't much change in this particular neighborhood for, I don't know, past fifty, seventy years. With the exception of one or two, with the exception of one or two that were built uh maybe twenty years ago. I believe there's a lot of special interest in this neighborhood. Um which is probably why it hasn't been developed in seventy years or so. We have approximately fifty synagogues within a mile radius and not even one new affordable building. I'm living in this neighborhood for about thirty years and I don't want to move out and, you know, we have grown children as well. We'd like our children to stay in this neighborhood as well, if possible, but as you're seeing, a lot of the younger people are being priced out and they're forced to move to other neighborhoods. Long Island, Jersey. Neighborhoods other than Queens here. Uh my understanding is the developers willing to allocate thirty to thirty five affordable apartments. It seems like the neighborhood could use it, but it also seems like the neighborhood is against this six story building. I'm urging the council, uh I'm urging the council to come straight on affordable housing and market few families that have a big influence in this neighborhood. And my name is Edward Yaguday and I am for this project. Thank you.
Thank you Edward.
Thank you. The last speaker on this panel is Nathan Elser, a call in speaker, is Nathan Rubenov.
Your time will begin.
Hello.
Yes, you can hear your name.
Thank you. I was muted. Uh good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Nathan Rubenov. I have uh been in the area as a business owner and as a resident for the last thirty years. And I would like to, you know, to vote in favor of this project. This is a very important project for the community and for the area for many different reasons, including uh you know, uh low income housing as well as well as commercial commercial space that will be available. You know, main street rents are very expensive in addition to the uh housing that is available in the area, which hasn't been built for many, many, many years outside of the Opal building that was built some fifteen or twenty years ago. There isn't any anything going up there. Uh we as a community need for our kids to stay close to us and there is no, there's no uh uh housing available other than the old two family homes that have been there for almost a hundred years now. Uh they're dirty, they're not elevated, uh they're smelly, you know, um so we need this and there's a lot of people who are just afraid to speak for the project because there's a big uh gang style, you know, uh threats in the community where people are being threatened that they shouldn't be talking for this project because this is not good for some, you know, so some people on this, you know, in the in the area, but this is ver- this is needed, we need it in the community and it would be very, very helpful for uh you know, the leaders of the community to listen. Not necessarily to the majority, but come in and look at the area. I'm sure you know the area. Look at the area and see the need yourself and you'll quickly understand what is needed in the area and that is the housing that's being put up there. Appreciate all of you guys in advance for making the right choices. Thank you.
Thank you Nathan.
Chair, that was the last speaker who signed off to testify on this project.
Thank you counsel. There being no thank you for your testimony. Are there any council member with questions for this panel? If you are joining remotely, please indicate by using the raised hand button.
Uh no, no questions for the panel chair. So and and then also no additional witnesses to testify on this project. So we can go ahead and close it here.
Thank you counsel. There being no more questions for this panel, the witness panel is now excused. There being no more members of the public who wish to testify on preconsiders L U C two one zero one two eight Z M Q and N two one zero one two nine Z R Q relating to the seventy seven dash thirty nine fly place rezoned proposal. The public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over.
Chair, we can do forty one summit next.
Thank you counsel. To continue with today's meeting, I will now open a public hearing on preconsiders L U C two hundred three one seven Z M K relating to the forty one summit street rezoned proposal and council member Hanif district in Brooklyn. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezonate existing M one dash one district to an R six B district. For anyone wishing to testify on this item, if you have not already done so, you must register now. And you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council dot N Y C dot gov slash land use. And I would like to allow council member Hanif to give any remarks regarding this project. Council member Hanif.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much Chair Riley. Um I'm council member Shahana Hanif and I wanna uh thank the applicant for being here this afternoon. So this is a project that um was originally during, came through during my predecessor's time and um when I I came onto the council, uh the applicant of reapplied for a smaller building um which does not fall under M I H and I have some concerns that I'll raise right now for a small spot rezoning with no M I H requirement and a loss of manufacturing amid a housing housing crisis. I have uh concerns, um given that over the last decade in my district, we have not seen um uh affordable housing get created and uh I've come in pretty staunch about making sure that we are doing everything to expand affordability in 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 the thirty ninth. I've got concerns around the industrial retention in my district and I do not want to set precedent for for future chipping away at manufacturing space. Um forty one summit is uh adjacent to the uh I B C here and I've heard from um uh various businesses and uh groups like the um S B S B D I C, S B I D C um that have serious concerns about what um building residential units could do to the um manufacturing integrity of the thirty ninth. I am calling for community benefits, affordability, despite the despite how small this project is, I'd like to see measures around flood resiliency in this part of the district um and and really uh uh housing that meets the criteria of this affordability crisis. Um so I'll end there. I do have some questions. Um but look forward to the presentation that the applicant has prepared for all of us.
Thank you council member Hanif. Counsel, please call the first panel for this item.
Uh let me just confirm, Richard, is it just you for this one?
Uh it is.
All right. So just um so Chair, I don't need to sort him and since he's been sworn in, so just Richard, um just a reminder, reminder, you're still under.
Thank you. I also would add, I believe the applicant, uh Jack LaCicero, uh may be on the call as well, although he may not be coming on.
We tried to promote him, um and he wasn't accepting the promotion. So so for now, it's just you and if he he's able to join, we'll throw him in.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to mayusetestimony at council dot N Y C dot gov. And now this applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you, please restate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you Chair Riley. Again, Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell P C for the applicant Jack LaCicero. Uh we thank council member Hanif for her comments. Um we've had some thoughtful conversations around this application. Uh and while the presentation is hopefully being loaded, uh I would add that council member Hanif raises the fact that this previously was before the council uh as an R seven A rezoning, which we discussed later in the presentation. Uh I'm pleased to report that in two thousand eighteen, when voted upon by Brooklyn Community Board Six, this was rejected by a vote of twenty eight in favor, zero against. Uh and in its most recent iteration, the building that you see in front of you was um reversed and was approved by twenty eight to one in favor. So the entirety of the community board was against this as an R seven A with affordability. Uh the entirety of the community board uh is in favor of this application, as you see before you, except for one guy, but you know, we're having coffee later. Uh next slide, please. So what are we seeking here? It is a very uh simple and straightforward rezoning. Uh this is an applicant who is proposing a rezoning uh of forty one lot three five two lot sixty and part of lot one. We'll show you where that is on the map soon. Uh within Brooklyn Community Board Six, the rezoning would be from an M one one district to an R six B to facilitate a four story plus seller residential building. Uh the building would have five thousand square feet, twenty five hundred square foot lot. And the two point O F A R allotted for non-inclusionary housing buildings would result in five thousand square feet. Um so this is the proposed development site. Next slide. The next slide demonstrates the last proposal versus this proposal. The last proposal included three lots, uh lots one, three and sixty. Uh in conjunction with city planning, oftentimes when we look at the area around the property, the street widths around the property, the surrounding uses, we will include a greater number of lots within the area other than just the applicant's lot. So three lots were included at the time. Uh that proposal would have resulted in seven dwelling units in a seven story plus seller residential building, twice the size of this building. That application was withdrawn. Uh that application would have included affordability pursuant to M I H. The current proposal uh is for lot sixty, which is the applicant's lot uh and a five foot portion of the adjacent lot one. We can talk about that as well. Uh this development would result in a four story building, forty feet tall with five thousand square feet and four dwelling units. The next slide uh is a slide which shows the zoning map, uh which I think is uh better viewed in the slide, one slide further shows you where the existing R six B is and what this would do. Uh you know, there's a dotted area on the on the half of the slide to the to the right. And you could see basically that all this does is evens out the zoning district boundary between that existing R six B and the adjacent M one one and that's it. Uh this is basically allows for the inclusion of one additional lot. And we cannot talk about that as well. And the next slide is going to show the area map and why I'm sorry, that's the tax map, which shows the duration of the rezoning, this one lot. Again, evening out that zoning district boundary and why this rezoning makes sense, I think is best viewed on this map, which is the area map. So you can see the subject block here on which the dotted line appears. Uh and so what do you see on this? On this uh block, you see that the majority of the block is zoned R six B. And that was accomplished through five individual or city planning sponsored rezonings that resulted in those twenty lots uh ended up as residential lots. So you've got twenty lo- lots that are zoned residential. To the west of that is the M one one portion of the property and those lots of those seventeen lots, sixteen of them are either open uses, vacant uses, uh gardens. There's a beloved community garden taking up about seven lots. And there's one commercial property. So of the thirty seven lots on this block, other than the applicant site, there's one commercial use. That commercial use, uh as was um uh discussed in the previous iteration of this rezoning is a bank building. It's a six thousand square foot commercial building and it's vacant and has been for some time now. The bank went out. Um so when we look at character of the area and what's appropriate on this block, uh this is a residential block and uh while we um value job creation and the retention of the city's manufacturing base, particularly in M one districts, um there are appropriate places for that and even appropriate places to increase that manufacturing density. This is not one of them. Uh this basically to keep this property as an M one property would actually do damage to the zoning plan here. You would have an M one use, a use which by as of right would allow to be allowed to have noxious uses, environmentally insensitive uses, uses with with um contaminants and such right in the middle of these residential properties. Uh it's inappropriate. The transportation here would be inappropriate to allow for potentially trucks to move in and out of the property. Again, we we uh are frequently in communication with community boards as well as industry associations with regards to uh industry and manufacturing tenants. Uh it's just not the right use here and and the community board agreed with that overwhelmingly. The next slide uh shows pictures of the area. Again, you've got an existing thirty five hundred square foot building, which has been vacant for four years. Um you see the Chase Building on the lower left, adjacent to the property. That is gone. Uh you know, this this, there's not really uh much of a commercial presence on this block. Uh it's it's a overwhelmingly residential block. Uh if you want to fast forward through some of the additional photographs, you can additionally see those pictures as well as the uh venting for the battery tunnel uh to the lower left. Um so the modest density that it would be engendered by the R six B here uh is entirely appropriate as almost all of the residential properties uh on this on this block are zoned R six B. Um we're closing with some slides which basically demonstrate what uh you know, how attractive the building would be in terms of layout. This building provides a forty nine foot rear yard. Uh so they are clearly almost fifty feet from their neighbors in the rear. Uh it is a very modest building. The intention in the building would be for the owner, Jack LaCicero, to live there uh in one of the four units and in one of the four units, and his daughters to live in the second one of the to the other one of the units. Of the remaining units, there's a ground floor unit, which is, you know, somewhat smaller due to the entryway and and mechanical uses. And then there's a fourth story. We add that there's zoning calculations here. I will not belabor those with regards to the council and will not. I will not disturb the council's time by doing that. What I will say, as we page through the remainder of these slides, is one of the reasons why affordability is not required on this site. So Article two, Chapter three of the zoning resolution discusses the affordability program. You actually cannot have mandatory inclusionary housing on this site. It's too small. They won't map it. And one of the reasons for that is as follows, and I would close with this, which is an important thing to consider with regards to this property. You've got a twenty five hundred square foot lot. The R six B here would permit a five thousand square foot building. The existing M one one here would permit at a two point four F A R, a six thousand square foot building. So we're actually, in terms of the building envelope, reducing the impact of the building here. We're going from a six thousand square foot building, which, by the way, in a noncontextual district, would not be capped at height, and coming down to a five thousand square foot building and to impose mandatory inclusionary housing as per the courts of the state of New York and the zoning resolution, would actually be a regulatory taking. You'd be you'd actually be taking rights from the owner, given the fact that you are not adding to the size of this building. This is a smaller building. This is a building without noxious uses. We are thrilled that the community board overwhelmingly, almost unanimously voted in favor of this. And we're hopeful that we can work with the council and the council member to come to a, you know, approval of the application. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Richard. I just have one question before I turn over to Councilmember Hanif. This site is currently zoned for manufacturing and is in close proximity to an active I B Z. Can you please describe any steps you have taken to explore possible manufacturing industrial uses on the site?
Sure. So, you know, importantly, Chair Riley, I B Zs are unable to be rezoned pursuant to policies initiated by the administration for the last more than ten years. So if you're in an I B Z and you have a manufacturing zone property, if you approached city planning and attempted to rezonate to residential, they would not accept your application. The fact that there is adjacency to the I B Z is is meaningful. You know, there are and and sometimes I like to reload the area map here. I don't know if that can be done. But if you look at the colors on the area map, I'm not sure whether that would, if it can be reloaded, that's great. But as I, ah, there we go. Thank you, James. If you take a look at the area map here, you know, everything to the south, southwest, and even to the northwest of this of this parcel in this block is is commercial slash manufacturing. So you see the dense commercial purple and red colors to the south and southwest of this property. You see the commercial and manufacturing uses to the north of this property. What do you see on this block? You see yellow, which is residential, multifamily residential. You see orange, which is in some cases commercial, but in other cases is mixed use. There's three in to the west. The existing M one one has three existing nonconforming three-story residential buildings. The two stories on the corner of Carroll Street and Van Brunt are existing multifamily buildings with ground floor commercial. I believe at least one of those is vacant. And then you have seven lots which make up the community garden. To to allow for a new M one one use here because it's the city of New York, and it's an M one property. You know, something will happen here. And as we've talked about before, the lowest common denominator in commercial uses these days is truck traffics. Truck traffic, it is, it is, you know, warehousing, it's last mile delivery centers. And also, it's frankly, as an as of right, used restaurants and bars. So, you know, in our view, while we understand the importance of retention of the city's manufacturing base, this is not the right spot for that. It's a twenty five hundred square foot lot. And we feel that, just given the synergies in this area and the fact that you got this this longstanding community garden, which was really the reason why the R seven A wasn't approved. The reason the R seven A wasn't approved four years ago was because people were worried about the impact on the community gardens of tall buildings. You now have a rezoning. Where not only are you have you taken out the two other lots that potentially would do damage to the garden, but you're rezoning to a district where the building actually gets smaller. And then in addition to that, we'd like to go on the record as saying that we would be thrilled to work with the community and importantly, the advocates of the community garden to see whether or not there's anything we can do for them to help them beautify and improve that garden. It is somewhat rundown despite the fact that it is a local resource. And wouldn't it be nice if if we ended up with a property which would not cause any environmental contamination to the garden, which would reduce the size of the building and potentially reduce any shading and effects on the garden? And also to potentially add amenities to the garden and really allow this to be, you know, better utilized by the community. So I guess that's kind of what we'd answer about the use as an M one.
Thank you, Richard. Yield my time over to Councilmember Hanif. Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. I wanted to know if you've been able to get in touch with the community gardens since we last spoke to think through what could be possible community benefits.
So we first, we spoke with the applicant after talking to you. We took a look at some of the notes that we took from the time because there were prior conversations with the with the garden people. And I have to, I I think that Jack has reached out preliminarily, but I don't think he's received a response yet. So I would say to you, Councilmember Hanif, two things. The first is, after this meeting, I'm going to, you know, re-up with the applicant and make sure that that communication happens immediately. And second of all, just because of the posture we're in, I understand that there's a gap between today's date and the eventual vote by the council. We would be one hundred percent thrilled to engage in that conversation and to come back to you repeatedly with the results of those conversations in the next two and a half weeks.
Got it. So going back to the affordability of this, could you share what income levels you expect these apartments to be affordable for and what type of units will be included?
Yeah, I mean, we're we're a little we're a little bit hamstrung, not really hamstrung, but the affordability is affected by the fact that this is going to be owner occupied. So he's got he's got two of his own units in there, which is, you know, he's someone who's been in the area for a while. So we're we're happy he's he can be able to stay potentially. The other two units, I know that Jack has looked at the surrounding market as well as the likely rental prices for those units. I think probably what I would be happy to do is to follow up with you in writing and in other conversations, because I know Jack is speaking to some local community members and is getting some information back, but I don't have actual hard numbers for you right now.
Got it. We definitely want to follow up about that. And and then aside from the community garden, are there any other actions you are willing to take to benefit the broader community, particularly around the concerns of manufacturing preservation?
You know, I think I the reason it's a challenge, I think, is because you've got a building here which is five thousand square feet of floor area. So each unit, given common space, is going to be roughly eleven hundred, ten, a thousand to eleven hundred square feet. And then you've got your two units which are owner occupied. So you're left with about two thousand square feet of additional floor area. You know, when we came with an R seven A for this property, there was there was a discussion with the community around things that we're going to be able to provide. And frankly, that building with affordability allowed the owner to do that. It was at a, you know, an R seven A would have been a ten thousand square foot building or greater. So we don't have that right now. And, you know, I think that I think we're happy to explore that. I I don't really know where we are as far as manufacturing retention. I think honestly, and again, we were frequent filers at the at the City Planning Commission and come before the council regularly. I think that that's going to be tough for us, but but I would value any suggestions. Again, we do speak with the manufacturing community regularly and often are involved in upzonings with regards to manufacturing goals. So I'm happy to to work with my contacts and to to have some more meaningful discussions around that. But I do know at a minimum that the community garden was literally the reason that we were unanimously rejected the last time. So so I know how much people love it. And if you walk by and it's not in the greatest shape, and I think that focusing our attention on that as we've done on other parklands within the area and within Brooklyn, I think is going to be a pretty good thing. But you know, again, happy to engage in that conversation over the next few weeks.
Could you share why this site has been vacant over the last four years? And have you marketed it to industrial businesses?
Yeah, you know, I think that Jack marketed it for a limited amount of time. And then, you know, at some point, particularly given his familiarity with the area and the fact that every other lot to the east of that line had been rezoned to R six B. And this was not this was not an R six B zoning, which which just which just sprang up. It was one where, you know, I can list off two thousand seven, the Carroll Street rezoning, forty five Summit Street rezoning in two thousand seven, Carroll Gardens and Columbia Street in two thousand nine. The list goes on and on. And so Jack basically, after, you know, being in this area for some time, just looked at this notch, talked to the city, and after the R seven A was rejected, the city said, look, if you want to come back to us with an R six B, it's okay. And the reason it's okay is because you hear a lot about the term spot zoning. The term spot zoning comes before the council a lot. Why isn't this a spot zoning? This isn't a spot zoning because the nature of the rezoning activity on this block is such that every other parcel, again, to the east of that line, has been zoned R six B. So allowing him to straighten this zoning district boundary and to to restore residential to this site, which is already adjacent to residential lots as seen is seen as being within the context of the area. That's why the city agreed to it and and basically encouraged us to do it. So you know, I I just think that Jack eventually realized that a manufacturing use here may be challenging, and the subsequent closure of the Chase Bank next door, which has a floor plate of over six thousand square feet, and frankly, is is a fantastic commercial site for anyone. I think that that kind of sealed the deal in terms of of the viability of this small site with limited access.
Got it. And then what will the applicant do if the property is not approved for rezoning?
It's a challenging question. And I think basically, if you walk the block and walk walk around the block and walk to Columbia Street, and you look to sales and leasing a property in in this area and in Brooklyn generally, I I think it probably becomes a bar slash restaurant or, you know, last mile delivery center, somewhere where you can store trucks, a a site which you could use for warehousing. All all as of right and all, you know, not the greatest uses for for being immediately adjacent to to residential uses and to families. You know, I think that, like, I've been in front of C B six a lot, and I I rarely get a unanimous or near unanimous vote from them. The fact that they were really kind of complimentary to the applicant and didn't really ask them a lot, you know, for us is is speaks speaks volumes. So again, you know, we thank you for all the dialogue. We we're going to come back to you with solid information and proposals. And we hope that we can, you know, benefit from that in the community conversations and come to a resolution.
Thank you. And then my final question is, what strategies are you going to employ to limit energy use and increase resiliency through new construction on the site?
Yeah. So Jack has some experience in construction. He's built other buildings and has, you know, would would commit to the resiliency and sustainability measures. This would be a green building. I think one of the benefits of having a smaller building is that it's manageable in terms of materials, cost of construction and such. So should the council member move forward on this, we're happy to make those commitments to allow for you know, sustainable building, which, you know, which will benefit the area.
Got it. And then just to go back to the question around how long it was marketed to industrial businesses. I know you mentioned brief. Do you have a timeline?
I don't, but I'm I'm happy to follow up on that. You know, because I know you know, the the property was has been vacant now for four years. I can talk to Jack about what happened after the vacancy and and can give you some specifics as far as any marketing that took place.
Understood. Okay, that's all for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanif. I'm now invited my colleagues to ask questions. If you have any questions for this applicant panel, please use the raise hand button on a participant panel. Counsel, are there any council member questions?
Chair, there are no council members with questions at this time.
There being no further questions, this applicant panel is excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wants to testify on forty one Summit Street?
Chair, there are no members of the public who signed off to speak on this side.
There being no members of the public who is to testify on preconsiders L U C two hundred three one seven Z M Q, excuse me, Z M K relating to the forty one Summit Street rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over. I would now open a public hearing on preconsiders L U C two one zero two three four Z M Q and N two one zero two three five Z R Q relating to the Eleventh Street and Thirty Fourth Avenue rezoning proposal and Councilmember Wong's district in Queens. This application is on the map amendment to rezonate an existing R five district to an M one dash five slash R six A district and a relating zoning text amendment to establish a special mixed-use district with special height and setback regulations, as well as establishing M I H program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting visiting the council's website at council.myc.gov/landy. Counsel, please call the first panel for this item.
Panel for this item is Frank Frank St. Jack and David Nidas. I'm sorry, David, if I'm mispronouncing your name.
Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Applicants, I will call on each of you individually to answer the following questions. So can you please raise your right hand? And do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in your answers to all council member questions? Frank St. Jack?
I do.
And David Nidas.
Yes.
Thank you. For the view in public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send the email request at landytestimony@council.myc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you, please restate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you. Next slide, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Riley, Councilmember Wong, Councilmembers, I'm Frank St. Jack with Acreman L L P. We're Land Use Council on this application. And I'm joined by David Nidas, the Executive Director of the Andromeda Community Initiative. I'll give a brief presentation with with David to follow to give some information about A C I or Andromeda Community Initiative. This application is seeking zoning map and text amendments to establish a special mixed-use or M X district pairing M one five and R six A zoning districts with modified height and a zoning text amendment to create a mandatory inclusionary housing or M I H area. These actions would facilitate the development of two new eight-story buildings with approximately three hundred and thirty-two units, including one hundred permanently income restricted M I H units. And I'll note that that this project was was initially filed with with fewer M I H units. But after discussion with the with Councilmember Wong, we have increased the number of of M I H units from about eighty to to one hundred. The goal of the project is to bring new investment to the Ravenswood area of Western Queens, resulting in new housing and job generating uses, which I'll I'll go into detail in in a moment. Next slide, please. This area of Ravenswood was rezoned R five with the enactment of the nineteen sixty one zoning resolution. With the exception of a few recent private rezonings, R five remains in place today despite the prevalence of industrial uses, which are shown in purple, and higher density residential developments, which are shown in yellow, sort of in the the lower right-hand side of the screen and then north of Broadway within the neighborhood. Based on a study of Ravenswood, the Department of City Planning established a general framework in twenty nineteen for mixed-use development in the area through the use of special mixed-use or M X zoning. And the two development sites in the proposed rezoning area are shown in the center of the screen and are labeled as such. Next slide, please. This aerial view looking south shows the lower density warehouse context surrounding the rezoning area, which is shaded and red at the center of the screen, and the residential context to the east and southeast, including the Nitro Ravenswood Houses and Queensview Co-ops. This site is also close to Rainy Park, Socrates Sculpture Park, and the Noguchi Museum, which are also which are also the west and northwest of the rezoning area. North of the rezoning area along Broadway and in existing R seven A C two three district, there is additional multifamily residential context, several eight story buildings line Broadway just north of the project area. Their recent, the recent private rezonings are also shown to the north and southwest of the rezoning area. And those are labeled in, on the bottom of the page, the Broadway and Eleventh Street rezoning, which established an M X with an R seven A and an M one four. The Vernon Boulevard and Broadway rezoning, which established an R seven X and R six B within the context of a large scale general development. And the pending thirty five oh one Vernon Boulevard rezoning, which would establish an M one four, R seven A, also in, in M X district. Next slide, please. The proposed specially mixed, mixed use or M X district allows for new medium density mixed use development with a maximum total F A R of five point O. Residential uses permitted up to three point six F A R and requires income restricted housing under M I H. A modified maximum height of ninety five feet above a seventy five foot base is to allow non, non residential uses to have adequate ceiling heights. The M X allows a wider range of uses and flexibility than a standard commercial overlay, which is consistent with the industrial and arts based character of the neighborhood and area wide planning goals. Next slide, please. So starting with the, the, the first of the two development sites, this is the northern site. A, the proposal is for a new eight story mixed use building with one hundred and ninety four total units, fifty nine of which would be permanently income restricted under M I H. That's an increase from forty eight previously proposed. David will speak in a moment about the Andromeda Community Initiative Trade School, which is on the, the ground floor of the building. And then there's also a film and television productions grade trade school in affiliation with York Studios, which has locations currently in, in Masbeth and Soundview for its, its actual film and television studios. And this would be to provide training to incoming workers in that industry. There is also space for artist studios to be run by a nonprofit, as well as a retail space that it's expected to be divided into smaller spaces for local retail and service uses. I'll note that the unit distribution is roughly fifty fifty between studio and one bedroom units and two and three bedroom units. Across the both projects, we raised the number of family sized units significantly by reducing studio and one bedroom units and increasing the number of three bedroom units. And I'll show you a, a overall breakdown in a moment. Next slide, please. So this is the building on the southern side of the proposed rezoning area. There's also a new eight story mixed use building. This has fewer units at one hundred and thirty eight, but forty one of which would be permanently income restricted under M I H. This building also has a, a non residential component that includes local retail, a food distribution business that's an existing business in New Jersey that currently serves the five boroughs. This expansion location would help it serve its Queens and Brooklyn customers more efficiently. And there's also a second floor, which is something that's, that's permitted by the M X or special mixed use district that would have office space that would be marketed to tech companies and about ten thousand square feet of local nonprofit office space. We've been in discussion with several nonprofit organizations and also the Jacob Rees Settlement Houses regarding carving out space for their use in, in the southern building of about thirty five hundred square feet to meet their needs. They, they currently have space in the Nitro Ravenswood Houses for a community center that's in a state of district pair. So we'll continue that conversation with respect to potentially locating them in the southern building. But ownership is, is committed, committed to having them in the space if they're interested. Next slide, please. Oh, and sorry, we can just stay on that side for one more moment. I also note that, that the unit distribution split is roughly fifty fifty here between studios and ones and twos and threes, again, at the request of the local community board. Sorry, now, next slide, please. Thank you. So with respect to the mandatory inclusionary housing breakdown for this project, the, the applicants have selected M I H option one, which requires a set aside of twenty five percent of the residential floor area at a weighted average of sixty percent A M I. As I noted at the outset, we've been increased that total number of units to resemble a set aside increased from twenty five percent to about thirty percent, which results in a breakdown of thirty three units at forty percent A M I, thirty four units at sixty percent A M I and thirty three units at eighty percent A M I. These A M Is are, are in line with the range of area meeting incomes within community district one. And we believe will serve the community well. You also note that there's a breakdown shown for the unit sizes, the, the number at each income level and the corresponding rents and, and income limits. And if needed, we can also provide that by building. Next slide, please. And I, I neglected to say on that last slide that those M I H units are provided without any city subsidy. This is entirely privately financed, permanently income restricted housing. With respect to sustainability, there'll be a number of, of sustainable features incorporated into this development to both improve efficiency and, and reduce emissions, including green roofs and solar panels and then more efficient building infrastructure and construction methods. Next slide, please. And then finally, the, the last two slides I have before I turn it over to David just showed the, the building form and these illustrative renderings. I noted that these are both eight story buildings, but height is concentrated on the, the northern and southern ends of the block. Eight, eight stories and, and both step down toward the mid block to six and four stories, which you can see in, in these renderings. Also note that, that street trees are required every twenty five feet along each of the four street franchises, which results in about fifty new street trees to enhance the block. I, I believe there is currently zero street trees on this block. So we, we believe that alone will be a significant improvement to the public realm. Next slide, please. And then finally, before I turn it over to David, these renderings show how the pedestrian experience would be improved by both active ground floor uses in the buildings as, as well as some of those street trees. The sidewalks would be entirely rebuilt from their, their current state and activated by, by the presence of, of ground floor non residential use. So now I'll turn it over to David, who will discuss the Andromeda Community Initiative, their role in the project and the proposed trade school in the northern building or development site one. David, I'll turn it over to you and, and next slide, please.
Ah, now I can unmute. Hi, my name is David Nidas. I'm the executive director of the Andromeda Community Initiative. We are an organization that trains people in construction focusing on masonry restoration, which as I'm sure the council is aware, is the repair work that goes on, on, on buildings after local law inspection, as well as general construction. We run safety oriented trainings that involve both certifications and hands on construction training. We serve multiple people referred from community based organizations throughout the city, giving them about a hundred and ninety hours of skills based training. It's about sixty two hours of it is certifications, where they're getting their S S T site safety training. They're getting their OSHA, they're getting their suspended and supported scaffolding, their silica awareness. And we're serving roughly about two hundred people now a, a year. We also then give them career guidance and job placements. And as you can see, we're running with our job placements of roughly eighty percent and people making nineteen dollars an hour. Actually, right now we're up to around twenty dollars an hour and things are going really well. Next slide, please. Right, and so you can see we were established in twenty eighteen and we are a trusted partner to many community based organizations. We're free to the participants. We, we use grants and leveraged assistance to try to provide our programming. We're happy to be partnering in the very near future. We have a cycle actually set up with Urban Upbound and we hope to offer great services to residents of the local community with respect to construction training. And really, the construction training we provide has the benefit of giving them the certifications you need and must have to get onto a job site, giving people who maybe didn't have access before, maybe people who are coming off of welfare and criminal justice reentry or, or sometimes are dealing with homelessness and unparalleled access to a profession which they wouldn't normally have. I'd like to turn it over to Franzi Justi, who works for us at A C I, to share a couple of little comments.
Yes, my name is Franzi Justi. I'm basically born in Brooklyn, New York. I came to A C I through H R A and it was a very great experience. It actually helped me gain employment over here. So it was a very great experience. They taught me how to lay brick, make cement, caulking, pointing. And it was just, it was an awesome experience. So it was just something that I needed. As far as when I was coming here, I was homeless. I was looking for housing and they hired me and it was a, I just need to just change my life. Now that they invested into me to become an OSHA trainer, I have a training this week, this new cohort. And it was just an awesome experience. What I like about the job is very rewarding to give back as an alumni and to, to get these students to be prepared for the workforce. And I think that if the city council support that, it will be very good for the community and to serve the community in a positive way that if we can have these students become great role models and examples for the construction industry. So A C I has done a lot for me and, and it continues to do a lot for people. And we have a lot of alumnis that call back and, and explain where they're at right now and the great stories. We have a lot of success stories of these students and we're just happy to be a part of their lives and to be a part of their success. And I'm very grateful to be hired by A C I and for the great jobs that we continue to do.
Thanks, Franzi. And with that, I'll turn it back to you all.
And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just have a few questions. The M one dash five is a very flexible zoning district in terms of use groups, particularly in an M X context like the proposed rezoning. How was the applicant demonstrating a commitment to the mixed use program presented instead of a wholly residential or wholly industrial use as a higher density?
Sure, so I'll, I'll note a, a, a few reasons. I, I mean, I think that the first of which is, is that both of these sites, the applicants are, are owners of the sites and intend to develop them. And that's how this, this programming for both buildings originated. Each are, each owner of, of each site, he, he's owned the site for a number of years and it's their vision to redevelop them with, with uses as presented. So, so there's a, you know, really the, the M X is, is a means to, for them to realize their vision for the programming, which, which wouldn't be permitted, you know, utilizing other methods, such as, as I noted in our presentation, a, a commercial overlay, the uses simply wouldn't be permitted pursuant to the zoning. The other thing I'll, I'll note is that, you know, with respect to an entirely manufacturing building, you know, relative to a mixed use building, which is what is proposed here, the, the financials just don't bear out. You know, obviously residential has a, a higher return and the residential is, is actually what's, what's helping sort of cross subsidize some of these uses. The, the construction trade schools and the artist studios, you know, are, are not, you know, high rent tenants, nor is, is the, the community facility used. So that, that's essentially cross subsidized by the market rate residential and, and which is also what is cross subsidizing the permanently income restricted housing under M I H. And then finally, I'll note that the M one five combined with the R six A has an overall F A R of, of five point O, but residential is, is tapped at three point six F A R. So if you were to do an entirely residential building, it would be significantly smaller than, than the mixed use building that, that's proposed here, you'd essentially be leaving about one point four F A R of floor area unused, which is, you know, significant on, on these larger sites. So, you know, I'd, I'd say that there's just a, in, in summary, there, there's really, you know, three reasons that the first is, is that this is the owner's vision, owner's plural vision for these sites. The zoning allows them to, to, to establish this programming. And the third is that, you know, sort of a, a market based argument that this is, is the most financially feasible development for this site utilizing the M X zone.
Thank you. Why do you think mixed light industrial and residential uses will work well in this location?
Sure, so, so this is actually, you know, part of a, a lengthier conversation with the Department of City Planning. They've released some, some really interesting studies with respect to both the viability and the compatibility of residential and, and light industrial. Here, you know, the, the uses proposed are on the lighter side of, of industrial and there are in both buildings essentially a, a built in separation. So the M X permits two floors here of, of non residential use. So essentially there's a, a buffer in both buildings of, of office use, separating residential from the light industrial uses with, within both buildings. The, the other aspect that, that we discuss in, in length in our, our land use application materials is this area was flagged by the Department of City Planning as appropriate for M X zoning because of its, its historic industrial and, and arts based character. So expanding the range of uses to include light industrial uses, such as the ones that are proposed here and, and the uses that, that were proposed and, and are, are intended to be developed and the neighboring rezonings adds to and complements that, that existing character, allowing a wider range of, of job creating uses than, than a typical commercial overlay would. So there, there's, there's more engineering involved and making sure that there's not conflict between the non residential uses and the residential uses. But in, in speaking with our clients and in speaking with the Department of City Planning, it's the same kind of consideration that would go into locating, for example, a, a successful restaurant or music venue or gym within a, a mixed use building that includes residential use. So I, I think we're conscious of that, but are, are implementing the right engineer to make sure that they, they work together.
Can you describe the environmental sustainability features on a proposed development? And do you expect to target LEED certification?
So we, we hadn't discussed LEED. I, I'm not familiar enough with, with LEED, but I, I think our, our architect could speak to that if, if further information is, is required. I will say that, that the local law ninety seven and that the package of, of legislation that was, was passed a few years back i, in New York, the Climate Mobilization Act, has, has really increased, you know, just simply compliance with new building code regulations and the Climate Mobilization Act will significantly reduce both emissions from this building as well as stormwater management in the building. But some of the other features that will be included in this development are high efficiency windows, increased insulation, Energy Star appliances, L E D lighting, smart technologies, simply to reduce costs and, and reduce energy use. We've also discussed implementing both green roofs and solar We've also discussed implementing both green roofs and solar panels. This area is apparently a good location for solar. And then stormwater management, which would include previous pavement, rooftop retention, and landscaping with bioswales. I mentioned the fifty street trees. That would be a really great opportunity to incorporate some of the stormwater retention.
And just to clarify, it's the Leadership, Energy, and Environmental Design Certification.
Got it, yeah. And apologies, I can't speak directly to LEED, but I can ask our architect whether any of the measures that we propose to implement would allow these buildings to hit any of the LEED certifications, or if they're actually, you know, going for LEED Gold Platinum with this building. I'm not aware of that, but I can certainly ask the architect to follow up.
Thank you. Council, are there any council members with any questions for this applicant panel?
I see that Council Number One is here, and she has her hand up.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Council Number One. We're joined by Council Number One. Council Number One, I will yield to you to ask your question.
Thank you, Council Member Riley. I just have a few questions. Frank and Steve have been good-faith partners to us so far. We have been meeting prior to this, and they have been very receptive to our inquiries. Steve or Frank, could you just, I heard you say that you had increased the number of MIH units. Could you confirm that you have committed to providing thirty percent of the total housing units of MIH option level one?
Council Member One, and so when we initially spoke with you, our proposal included the twenty-five percent set aside under MIH option one, which resulted in, forgive me, eighty-two units of permanently income restricted housing. The applicants have agreed to increase that number to one hundred, which represents the thirty percent set aside option one.
Okay, great. And can you just help me understand the breakdown? Are they going to be one bedrooms, two bedrooms for the new units that have been added?
Yeah, sure. And so it's essentially, they've been distributed proportionally. And sorry, just looking for my notes, give me one second. What I can do is just send over the prior breakdown and the new breakdown. But so the eighteen units that were added, we essentially split that into three portions of six units, and then spread those units across the studios' ones, twos, and threes. Ultimately, because of the nature of the MIH program, it made most sense to just distribute those additional units as evenly as possible across both the income bands, the three income bands at forty, sixteen, eighty percent AMI, as well as the unit distribution. That was sort of the easiest end, and not so much that it was easy, but the concern was maintaining compliance with MIH. So what I can do is send you over a comparison chart, so you can see where those units were added. But essentially, it's distributed evenly across income bands and the units.
Okay, great. And have you engaged with the owners of the properties within the rezoning area not controlled by the applicants, your new neighbors?
Yes, and forgive me, because I think that there's been more recent discussion, and I just, I, at the moment, I, my understanding is that the property owners that are not included, or they're not applicant-controlled, but they're included with the rezoning, are aware, and there has been outreach. I just don't know when the most recent conversation between the applicant ownership and those property owners is, but I can report back on that.
Got it. If you could just continue to commit to engage with the area residents by distributing flyers or door-knocking, or whatever it is that you can do, before you move forward in construction, just to make sure that everyone is aware, including the business owners, I would really appreciate that. And are you still committed to working with my office to identify a local MWBE business, businesses to meet the Borough President's recommendation of the target of thirty percent for construction?
Yes, absolutely. That's, you know, we'd like to continue to be in touch with your office on this project generally, and then specifically as it relates to outreach to the local community, as well as hitting MWBE targets and local hiring targets for this project.
Time's expired.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member One.
Thank you, Council Member One. Council, are there any more council members with any questions?
I don't see any council members with questions at this time, Chair.
There being no questions, this applicant panel is excused. Council, are there any members of the public who would like to testify on Eleventh Street, Thirty-Fourth Avenue proposal?
We do have a few members of the public who signed up to testify on this. So if you want to make the announcement, then I'll get the names. Chair, do you want to make the announcement of the two minutes for the public witnesses? We have one, two, three, four witnesses.
Members of the public, we given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the Sergeant-at-Arms has started your clock.
The first panel for this item will be Richard Kuzami, Larry Wilson, Seema Perkins, and Brendan Levy. So the first speaker will be Richard Kuzami.
Your time will begin.
You may begin. Thank you. Oh, thank you so much. I'm Richard Kuzami, President of the Old Astoria Neighborhood Association, and we are this local civic association that represents this area. We are in favor of this project. We think that the merits of this project over any political considerations, I think, make a proven obvious choice. A number of reasons why the proposal is consistent with the goals identified by the Ravenswood Study and Cornell Technion on promoting mixed-use development in the underutilized properties near transit, and include income-restricted housing and space for job-creating businesses. The project has one hundred permanently affordable MIH units, which is in desperate need in Queens, and is based on option one of forty, sixteen, eighty percent. Fifty percent of these apartments are family-oriented, two and three bedrooms. And we find particularly exciting is the two new training schools, the Andromeda Community Initiative in New York Studios, providing pathways to careers and help create pathways to the middle class for underemployed and unemployed New Yorkers. Also, these trades are important to keep these industries competitive in New York City. We're told that the project will create three hundred and ninety-six jobs, hundred and sixty-three with the trade schools, ninety-six office jobs, seventy-two retail, thirty with the community facilities, based sixteen artist studios, and two jobs with a food distributor. Also, it's an important project for Long Island City and Queens by adding to our Queens economy through the construction jobs and two hundred-plus jobs generated post-construction. Badly needed studio space for artists is also created. Food distribution company will continue to keep our tax base and our Okay.
Thank you, Richard.
Next speaker is Larry Wilson.
You may begin, Larry.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Gary.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Riley and members of the Subcommittee. My name is Larry Wilson, and I'm a member of Thirty-Two BJ. I'm here today on behalf of our union and our eighty-five thousand property service workers here in New York City to express our support for the proposed Eleventh Street, Thirty-Fourth Avenue project. Thirty-Two BJ supports responsible developers who invest in the communities where they build. I am happy to report that developers affiliated with JPP Thirty-Third Street LLC and Lily and John Realty, Inc. have reached out early and made a credible commitment to creating prevailing wage building service jobs at this site. This commitment means that workers in Queens will have access to family-sustaining wages, retirement, retirement qualities, health benefits, at a time when New Yorkers need them most. We estimate that a mixed-use development like this one proposed by a developer will be permanently staffed by an estimated six building service workers. The Eleventh Street and Thirty-Fourth Avenue project will also have approximately one hundred affordable housing units in accordance with the mandatory inclusion of housing program. For these reasons, we are in full support of this project. We have full confidence that JPP Thirty-Third Street LLC and Lily and John Realty will be responsible employers and presidents in the community. For these reasons, we respectfully urge you to approve this rezoning. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Larry.
Next speaker is Seema Perkins.
You may begin, Ms. Perkins.
Good afternoon. I am the Senior Director of Operations for Our Children. We are a local not-for-profit organization and very close proximity to the site, walking distance actually. And the purpose of our not-for-profit is we work with incarcerated and formerly incarcerated mothers. We provide them supportive and transitional housing. So needless to say, we are very excited for a project like this to be brought to our area. We are severely lacking in affordable housing for the women that we serve. We also provide them vocational services, job training, and we have various other arms and programs of our organization, such as a food pantry, and various things of that nature that will benefit greatly from a site like this and a development like this, not only just for the women that we serve, but also the staff members of our organization. A great deal of them also are within the income bracket for the permanent affordable housing. We are very excited about and do support this program wholeheartedly. It is in line with our concerted efforts to minimize the recidivism rate of the women that we serve, and we hope that this development site gets approved very much so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins.
Last speaker is Brendan Levy.
You may begin, Mr. Levy.
Hi, everyone. Brendan Levy with the Queens Chamber of Commerce. Queens Chamber stands in favor of this project. We know the owners, and they're very reputable. They always make strong commitments to the communities they serve. I've personally visited the Andromeda Community Initiative at the current site, and it's amazing work that they do. And there was a testimonial earlier to the good work that they do and how they meaningfully change lives. So very strong supporters of ACI. So I echo the sentiments of our earlier folks testifying. Project's going to bring online approximately a hundred new permanent affordable housing units through the city's MIH program. We're in desperate need of these in Queens, particularly for people earning the forty, sixteen, eighty percent of the area meeting income. Again, ACI is a tremendous program that's going to drive, you know, propel people from minimum-wage jobs and get them on a pathway to middle-class construction jobs and potentially jobs in the motion picture industry, which is a booming industry in Queens and throughout the city. Projects also creating approximately four hundred total jobs, including jobs associated with the trade school, retail jobs, jobs associated with the community space, incorporating sixteen artist studio jobs, and two jobs with a food distributor. Again, it's important for LIC and the Queens community by helping to significantly add to the Queens economy through construction jobs that'll generate also two hundred jobs post-construction, which is going to be a boon to the local economy. With us emerging from this post-pandemic nightmare we've all been through, these are desperately needed jobs, so the Queens Chamber stands wholeheartedly in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Thank you for your testimony. Council, are there any council members with questions for this panel?
No council members with questions at this time.
There being no questions for this panel, the witness panel is now excused.
Chair, there are no more members of the public who have signed up to testify, so we can go ahead and close it then.
There being no other members of the public who would like to testify, preconsiders LUC two one zero two three four, ZMQ, and N two zero two three five, CRQ, relating to the Eleventh Street and Thirty-Fourth Avenue proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, Subcommittee Council, Land Use, and other council staff, and Sergeant-at-Arms for participating in today's hearing. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.